Okay, and you'll see like a little orange cross that says join meeting. Okay. No, join meeting. And then it'll ask you either.
Alabama. Okay.
Okay.
Let me hang up, Mike.
Thanks, bye.
We're about to start, so can we get that under?
No, I just said she's laughing, you win.
And do we have? Good evening. Today is Monday, September 27, 2021. The time is 5:00 PM. The adjourned regular meeting of the following will come to order. The Victorville City Council and the same council also sitting as the Victorville Library Board of Trustees, the Southern California Logistics Rel Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency, the City is Housing Assets Successor, Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? Will you please call the roll?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Becerra. Councilmember Gomez.
When I started this.
Mayor Protem Irving. Mayor Jones.
Here, thank you. We have a quorum. Madam Clerk, do you need a few minutes to get the technical difficulties?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes, certainly. So we're going to break momentarily until we can get our technical issues resolved.
How you doing?
It looks like we have our technical difficulties resolved, so we're about two minutes away from beginning again. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. All right, we are resuming our open session. We just established a few moments ago that we do have a quorum. With that said, we're going to move on to our invocation being led this evening by Pastor Dez of Victorville First Church of the Nazarene. Following that, we're going to have our Pledge of Allegiance offered to us by City Manager Keith Metzler. Is Pastor Dez with us? Pastor, please come to the podium. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Let's bow our heads in moment prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for your grace and mercy towards us this evening. Grant your servants wisdom and understanding. Allow your servants the ability to honor your word. Cause this meeting to benefit and strengthen the city of Victorville. In the sovereign name of Jesus Christ the Lord, our Savior. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Mr. Metzler, will you lead us in the pledge? Everyone, please rise.
Everybody please rise, face the flag, place your hand over your heart, follow after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Metzler. All right, moving on to the presentation of the agenda, Madam Clerk, are there any revisions to the agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are no revisions.
Thank you. Council members, do any of you have any conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing and seeing them, we're going to move on to the introduction to public comments. Before I do that, Madam Clerk, are there requests to speak this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. All right, well, everyone, welcome to tonight's meeting of the Victorville City Council. Your city council is interested in your ideas and opinions, and furthermore endeavors to incorporate them into its deliberations. At the same time, the council must be able to carry out its deliberations in an organized and business manner. Excuse me, the council must be able to carry out its business in an organized and efficient manner, free from material disruption. Therefore, this meeting will be administered in accordance with Government Code Section 54957.9 and the council's established policies and procedures. Individuals may speak on agenda items or on issues not posted on the agenda during the public comment section, providing those issues are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Individual speakers may address the council once per public comment period and once per each public hearing item for up to three minutes. Additional time may be allocated for appeal hearings in accordance with the city's adopted policies and procedures manual. All testimony must be directed solely to the council. Open meeting laws do not permit council members to engage in dialogue during the public comments periods. Speakers are requested to comment as briefly as the subject permits. Whether attending this meeting in person or via Zoom, once comments are invited, the speaker will be called on by name, then recognized by the presiding officer. The speaker will state the item number or numbers that will be addressed, or that the subject is a non-agendized matter. Audience members may not disrupt, disturb, or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of this meeting, and those who do are subject to removal from the meeting pursuant to Penal Code 403. Your understanding and cooperation are appreciated. Madam Clerk, may we have our first speaker?
Valentin Godina. No agenda item is noted.
Good evening, Mr. Godina. Are you going to speak on item number one or another issue?
Is this for redistricting?
Yes, sir, that's item number one.
Yes, item number one then.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Valentin Godina, and I am a concerned citizen of Victorville. I've ran a couple of times for city council, and I'm, and I believe I did not get a successful outcome because of the way we are holding our votes. In order to comply with California's Voting Rights Act, the city of Victorville needs to change from at-large to district elections. It has been over six years since we addressed this issue with Measure X. And in 2010, when we addressed it, the population was 115,000. The population has now increased, according to 2020 census, to 124,000. In the span of a decade, a lot has changed, and we need to update the city charter to comply with the California's Voting Rights Act. In the city's website, Ursa Community Profile 2010, Latino population was 47.8%, and in 2021, again, a city's website, Ursa, Latino population is now 56.8%. This is why Victor, this is Victorville's own findings. This is why we need to update the charter to comply with California Voting Rights Act. By having more diversity in our city council, we can have more diversity in commissions. Currently, Latinos are not represented in the various city commissions, like Measure P Oversight Committee Planning and and the Planning Commission. I haven't seen him. If someone has, I'd like someone to point them out to me. More information will come on this when we have our press conference that will relate the history of Latino discrimination and disenfranchement of the city of Victorville. Rita Ramirez was elected, and she left the city's council seat vacant, having no Latino representation or
You have 30 seconds.
build this city seat. This is another way of silencing the community's voice and violating the California's rights.
Thank you, Mr. Godina. Madam Clerk.
Chef Basil.
Good evening, Mr. Basil, welcome. We can barely hear you.
I'm going to be very short, because I'm going to let, I don't see our attorney on here, so I'm going to let our attorney, Scott Rafferty, to speak.
Mr. Rafferty, I believe he's on there, but if you could speak up a little bit, Chef, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. A lot of the community people, we all came together, and we decided it was now time to change the dynamics, to have more people of color. And I'm very thankful that Mr. Scott Rafferty listened to us. All nationalities, Asians, Hispanic, African American, and he's the one that we're working with, so I'm going to be very clear, no hidden agenda here, that, you know, he is our attorney on record, very clearly. So I'm going to let him speak. I appreciate you giving me the time.
Thank you, Chef. Madam Clerk.
Uh, via Zoom, Romero Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mr. Rodriguez. Welcome.
Hello?
Yes, good evening. Yes, good evening and welcome.
Yes, I am really opposed to redistricting, to removing from at-large. I don't see any difference it's going to happen. The, with redistricting and having certain districts voting certain groups of people, then having at-large, what it's going to do, it's going to create a group of people that are going to be able to gerrymander the districts, and they're going to choose a district for Hispanic people. They're going to choose a district for, for African American people. But then within themselves, they're going to choose three districts for the, the power people, the, the, the ones in power, the, the white people, the, the ones that take, make all the decisions. So it doesn't really make any difference whether they have, I saw the graphs of, they show how, you know, so many people voted in at-large and we were, we were dispersed in, in power. Some voted for more and more. They're going to do the same thing. They're going to do the same thing in the district and have people running for you. What's going to happen, you're going to have a district for Hispanic people. You're going to have a district for African American people. You have three white districts. And it's always, there's always going to be three to two. And they're going to gerrymander those lines. It's not going to be in blocks. It's going to be a nest like a snake or a T or whatever it's going to be. And they're going to control it. It's going to be the same thing. Nothing's going to change. So whatever, what has to change is the people that we have in power right now. Because we have the illusion, we have the, the illusion that we have diversity and we don't. We have Becerra thinking that she represents us. She doesn't. She represents everything against the Hispanic community. We have the other representative, we think that represents the, the, the black, the African Americans. No, that she represents the, the, she represents the city and the needs of the city. So what, what we have really is just one person that really represents us, which is Gomez. And we saw that. We saw that in the election. She voted, she won 8,000 of the votes, no matter what they threw at her. The mismanagement of funds, fraud and everything. But the people saw that. None of the elected, none of the incumbents, like you see Negrete, McKecon, and even Gloria Garcia got the majority in votes because people know whether, if we do the redistricting what, right now, all they can do, that's where you go to certain cities and you see, why is this African American city or Hispanic city so, so run by white people? Run by these, these, this group of people? Why? Because they changed it from at-large to district.
You have 30 seconds.
After we get the districts, when some of those districts start populating with the minority, all they have to do is just change the district. That's all I do. I don't think it's going to make any difference. On the contrary, they're going to throw their own little puppets in, in our districts and the districts that they, they seem for the, for the minorities to run against them. They're always going to be in power. It's going to be harder to get rid of them. So that's, that's my opinion. And you see other cities, they've had very bad experiences. Unless we had more open, it'd be better.
Time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Madam Clerk?
Karima?
Good evening, Ms. Kabir. Welcome. Ms. Kabir, are you with us? All right, Madam Clerk, let's move on, but we will come back to her in a moment.
Roger LaPlante.
Mr. LaPlante, welcome.
Yes, Madam Mayor, City Council. I worked many years for the progressive voters in the Victorville area in the 8th Congressional District, 33rd Assembly District. The, the voters are, the vote is being suppressed as we speak because you guys kicked off one of the council members that was duly elected. And I, I can understand why you have not wanted to do districting because some of the hogwash that Romero just spouted was true, and you guys will make your own click. But I'm glad that you're going to be forced by law, by the Constitution that you swore an oath to, that you should resign because you do not obey that oath. But I'm glad that you're being forced to do this via, you know, maybe an attorney from Venice or some other attorney. It's, it's really sad that you don't do it on behalf of the citizens and the voters. The voters are what counts. The Constitution is what counts. Being openly active in voter suppression is on the wrong side of history, Your Honor and fellow council members. Councilwoman Blanca Gomez actually put that, I tried to put it on the agenda. The mayor of Pro Tem denied that, but she wants to raise the pay instead of doing the due diligence of districting and giving the voters the rights that we all have as citizens. So I congratulate Ms. Gomez, Councilwoman Gomez, and hopefully Congresswoman someday because she's doing an outstanding job speaking up for the citizens. We never have agreed on a lot of things, but this we agree on. You need to do what is right. You need to obey the law. The law says that you're supposed to do redistricting. You know that. You're playing, you're playing the voters as fools. And I'm just asking you to stop doing this. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. LaPlante. Madam Clerk?
Sita Gazarian.
Welcome, Ms. Gazarian.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Victorville City Council. My name is Seta Gazarian, and I am a 35-year Victorville resident. I also wanted to comment tonight on Agenda Item Number One, to urge the council to move to districted elections rather than at-large elections. Until the city takes up this vote and votes yes, it will remain out of compliance with the California Voting Rights Act. Our neighboring city of Hispania and our neighboring town of Apple Valley have already transitioned to districted elections, as have both of the school districts in our city of Victorville, Victor Valley Union High School District and Victor Elementary School District. Again, I urge you to please vote yes and begin the process of transitioning to districted elections so that the city can be in compliance with the California Voting Rights Act. And in order to avoid further costly litigation, because redistricting will happen, it's just a matter is of you taking it up by choice or being forced to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gazarian. Madam Clerk?
We'll try Karima again.
Thank you. Are you with us, Ms. Kabir?
Yes, hello there. I was just muted. I was never unmuted. Yes, I would, some good points. I would also like to talk in favor of the California Voting Rights Act and supporting it, which is democracy in action. It's a lot easier for one councilperson to hear the complaints, tend to the needs of 20,000, or my math is not that good. I'm not a math person. 25,000 people rather than 120,000 people. So if you're talking about representation, if you're talking about being the voice of the people, if you are talking about democracy, that is why we have the California Voting Rights Acts, and Victorville needs to get into compliance with it for a lot of the reasons said before. And I would like to take a moment to refute kind of what I heard from a former speaker. Victorville is over 50% Hispanic. We have a large African American population as well. There's no way that you can gerrymander or cut Victorville into it, into pieces into which there is a Hispanic district or a black district or a white district. We're pretty mixed up at this point. There are some pockets. There are some differences because I've seen the maps as well. But that's, that's what we're here for. The people are here to keep the council accountable, and the council needs to hear our voices. So obviously, we're going to fight that if it is gerrymandered, and we are going to respond to it. So I look forward to seeing one city councilperson for 200 or 25,000 residents of Victorville because we definitely need, we definitely need counselors to be responsive to the population who they represent. And we need people to have a chance to reach out to not just all five councilpersons, to hold one city councilperson accountable if they are not getting the services that they need or deserve. So I would like to bring that angle to it, but also a lot of good information from the past speakers. So again, I am in support of the California Voting Rights Act, and I look forward to Victorville following it along with Hispania, Adalanto, and the school.
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you, Ms. Kabir. Madam Clerk?
Maribel Nunez.
Welcome, Ms. Nunez. Are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Victorville City Council. My name is Maribel Nunez. I'm a co-convenor of the Brown and Black Redistricting Alliance, and we have members in the city of Victorville. And I am here in support Agenda Item Number One, supporting that the city upholds the California Voting Rights Act. In order to comply with the California Voting Rights Act, the city of Victorville needs to change to at-large, to, to district elections. If we looked at the 2021 census redistricting California statewide information, data, we see that there's, within voters, 47%, African American, 16.5%, Asian American, 3.6%. So it's over 50% people of color that are in the city. And we do, that is enough to comply or that would require for the California Voting Rights Act to be implemented. And yeah, there was a measure that you guys went through and didn't vote, didn't get votes. It was only short for 2,000 votes. But you know, that's a lot that has happened, and the population, the communities have grown since. And like I said, when you look at the, the, one thing I want to reiterate too, that in your various, if you have more diverse representation throughout the city and diversity within your representation, you'll have more diversity in your appointments and city commission. And, you know, as intended in the California Voting Rights Act, when you have the right people in office, we have some also right people that are in the city commission. So as we said before, there's no, there's no commissions in the various Oversight Committees, the Measure P Planning Commission, other commissions, no Latinos in that, in a, in a city of Victorville. And then also, we mentioned that Ms. Rhea Ramirez not being seated. There's a Latino voice that's missing that definitely doesn't put you guys in compliance with the California Voting Rights Act. And if you vote no in, in the meeting today to change from at-large to a district, we will be holding a press conference sharing today's city's council vote and reveal the past history of discrimination and disenfranchement within our community, particularly the Latino residents of Victorville. So thank you so much and hope that you vote yes on one, to move from at-large to district elections. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Nunez. Madam Clerk?
Scott Rafferty.
Good evening, Mr. Rafferty. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, first of all, let me assure Mr. Rodriguez that there's not going to be any gerrymandering. This isn't just the California Voting Rights Act, which is a cheap and cheerful way to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, which is also an issue here because there are, is a majority minority district, and there's zero tolerance for gerrymandering. You will do what's right for the Latino community. And having said that, this really is good for voters of all races. And I'm asking incumbents not just to vote yes, but to embrace this and look at the recent history of this council. It hasn't been very kind to incumbents. When, when a city council member runs for supervisor or for Congress, they get fewer votes in Victorville than they do in the rest of the district, and they never win. And the long, when incumbents run for reelection, you had an incumbent mayor run just last year who placed eighth. And that's a pattern. The, the more often you run, the less well you do. That's very unusual. And it reflects that the system is not giving neighborhoods an opportunity to recruit and identify real natural leaders who can negotiate from a position of knowing what their neighborhood needs. And look at the southeastern quadrant of the city, 45,000 people. More than 20% of them are foreign born, and they're candidates from all ends of the political spectrum that have run from that area, and none of them ever get elected. And as a result, there's a, a voice that's missing. And that's true for all parts of the city. They need to have somebody that's in their neighborhood that is accountable to them, that is able to represent them. And this will lead to a less extraordinarily conflictual culture on your, on your council. Because there will be collaboration. There will be negotiation. People will respect the expertise that each member has from their part of the city. So this is an opportunity, and, and I urge you to, to take it. There's no question about liability. I mean, I can send you all kinds of racially polarized voting information. It's, it's there. But the real problem is people aren't voting under the system.
You have 30 seconds.
You've got the lowest, one of the lowest voting participation rates in the state, and that's unhealthy. It's bad for the city. It makes you less influential, and you need to change that. So thank you very much. I hope you do the right thing and look forward to collaborating. And you need to fill that vacancy too. That is a, a very critical problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rafferty. Madam Clerk?
Miguel Soto Jr.
Good evening, Mr. Soto. Welcome.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of this council. I am also calling in in support of Agenda Item Number One. There's not much information that I can really give. Mr. Rafferty's report, sorry if I butchered your name, lays it out very clear as to why we need to pass this recommendation. The people have spoken. They're on the meeting today speaking up that we need this. What more, what more could, do you need? What more does the city need? It's in, in pursuit of litigation, you know? So it's very clear. I really do doubt that the audience and the members of the public won't really do a lot of convincing. But I do have hope that this council will make the right decision and, and pass what is recommended by staff. And really, that's, that's what I really just wanted to call in. What, what are we waiting for? Now is the time. If not now, when? Someone said in the, in the meeting, in this meeting a little earlier, it's, it's not a matter of if it happens, it's a matter of time. And that's 100% when. It's, that's 100% right. And this, this council can make history. Let's make history and let's pass what's recommended by staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soto. Madam Clerk?
Ashiko Newman?
Yes. Welcome, Ms. Newman.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Ashiko Newman. I'm a citizen of Victorville. I've been planted here for the last seven years. Been a resident.
Ms. Newman, can I ask you to speak more directly?
I've been a resident of the High Desert for the last 23 years, a permanent resident in Victorville for the last seven years. I really feel like at this juncture, here we are. We don't really have many opportunities in backpedaling and going forward. We have the, the lawyers on the table saying, this is what we need to do. And I really think it would be unwise to invest our resources in litigation when that money could be better spent in Old Town and so forth. We have a lot of things on the table in terms of Victorville. Now, do I believe that our, our, our people are widely represented? I do. Victorville is very diverse. Our council is very diverse. And I don't think it's fair of a person to dismiss a person's ethnicity because all of a sudden they're voting against what you have on the table. You, you, Ms. Becerra, she was, she was representing well the Hispanic population before she got on the dais. Ms. Irving, your, your color wasn't in question until you got on the dais. It's unfortunate. We're looking so much at color and we're talking about all this diversity, and yet we're doing it, we're, we're going against what we're saying. We have a diverse group. Let's continue to make sure that that is represented in our council and in the things that we do for the city. I'm an African American woman. There's nothing I can do to change that, and I wouldn't. But I don't stand here today because I'm black. And because I'm a woman, I stand here today because I'm a citizen. I have a heart and passion for the city. So when we're talking of issues like, you know, redistricting and all of these things, are we going to put the right people in office? Yes. Because we're going to, hopefully, we have the right people that's going to stand up for our, for our, for their districts. We have the right people that's going to say enough is enough. And we're going to vet those people. I don't think it's fair to, to go against our, our, our voters and say that they're ignorant because they don't vote correctly. Look at the polls. It's the people who put these people in office. Nobody did that on their own. No, but none of you walked up here and said, I'm going to do this no matter what. No, the people voted you in. I trust our residents. I trust our council to make the right, wise and I trust our residents, I trust our council to make the right, wise and right decision for our city. I think it's unfair.
You have thirty seconds.
Over this thing for us to point fingers at the very people we elected to get here. Each one of you has a white, has a, has a specific gift to offer to our city, and I expect you to do your jobs. And I expect to hold you accountable when I see things that are not appropriate. And whoever's up here next, when that seat is filled, let's do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Madam Clerk.
There are no additional speakers.
I would like to speak as well as a member of the public.
Thank you. So Ms. Gomez, if you'll kindly proceed down to the podium, Ms. Gomez is going to speak as a member of the audience and with no color of authority of her office, the audience will have to gauge for itself how much weight they wish to give to her comments. Welcome, Ms. Gomez.
So Tuesday's meeting, if you would realize, came into an adjournment for today. So today is considered a regular meeting, so you don't have the typical first and third members that would come and participate, which does quarantine a lot of the civic engagement that I believe that we profess in theory, but in practicum, we obviously don't address. We knew that Mr. Conway, at one point, an attorney, then Mr. Shankman from Malibu tried to do the same thing. So now we have Scott Rafferty coming in, and now it looks like somehow the city council looks amenable, probably viable at voting for something like this because it looks like it's something appropriate for them to do. What I'm looking at is Measure X in 2016, when I ran for office, because I'm Councilwoman Blanca Gomez. No one can take my title and put weight or not weight, whether you're the mayor or not the mayor, I consider to be, and I am, whether I'm in the bathroom or I'm in this public comment sector. In 2016, if you realize what occurred, we had Devernowski write the arguments for Measure X, and Measure X were very legalese. A lot of individuals didn't understand what yes and no meant. And I know I ran on Measure X as well, which was very unfortunate because when you do have people in power with a certain ideology that ideally supersedes anything that would propel or bring higher any type of progressive values or any type of disenfranchised voice. And with that, I'd like to read a little bit of that letter that we just got today all council members received. And it's available through the California Public Records Request. If you just send an email either to Mr. Metzler or the division or the city clerk, you can definitely, or send something to me and I can forward it on. A little bit of that letter that we received is, says, "At-large elections have disempowered many Latino neighborhoods. Districts should consider not only race." That's not what we're only considering here. And I remember a speaker saying they were looking at color. No, we're going beyond color. "But economic conditions that identify areas that need a dedicated voice on the council. Attachment two shows the detailed neighborhoods generally east of the power line that faces special economic challenges, including low income, limited education, high unemployment, lack of home ownership and crowded housing. Many of these areas have not had residents serve on the city council for some time." Another consideration is the immigration community. The brown area between the power line and Spring Valley Lake and between Costco and Bear Valley Road is more than twenty percent foreign-born, including areas that are not economically disadvantaged.
You have thirty seconds.
There, they have been a number of recent candidates, but none have been successful. The map on the next page shows the absence of neighborhood campaigns had disproportionately suppressed candidates from Latino areas and compounded the gap of Latino registration and participation. Fifty-three percent of Latinos live in a majority Latino consensus block, red and pink, but twenty-eight percent of all Latinos live in the pink blocks where a majority of eligible Latinos did not vote. Conclusion, the terms come to abandon the at-large elections, and I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez, and to cite the references from the letter that came from Attorney Rafferty. All right, Madam Clerk.
That the Honorable City Council adopt Resolution Number.
No, no, Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
Oh, no, there's no more speakers. Sorry.
All right, with that said, the public comment period is now closed, and the chair brings this item back to the council. We're now going to take up our first and only business in order this evening, which is written communications, item number one. This is consideration of adoption of a resolution of intention to transition from at-large to district-based elections for members of the Victorville City Council. Mr. Metzler? Will you introduce the item, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Yes, you have a staff report prepared by your city attorney, Mr. Andre Deportinowski. He also has deputy city attorney, Ms. Tara Taguchi available. They have a brief presentation of this item that they'd like to share with the council at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Deportinowski.
Thank you, Mayor Jones and council members. As you're all aware, on August twelfth, we received a letter from Attorney Rafferty indicating alleging that the city's current at-large election system was violative of the California Voting Rights Act. And basically, because it was diluting the influence of Latino voters. In addition, in that letter, Mr. Rafferty threatened litigation against the city if we decided and declined to go to district-based elections. We have done some of the research on this matter and have determined that based on the receipt of that letter, we have forty-five days within which to consider a resolution of intention, which is before you tonight. Tonight is the, would be the last date within which you'd be able to adopt that resolution of intention in order to avoid the potential of significant legal fees. There is, within the California Voting Rights Act, what's called a safe harbor provision, which indicates that if we were to adopt the resolution of intention this evening, we'd have the ability to limit the plaintiff's attorney's legal fees to thirty thousand dollars. If not, we could end up in very expensive litigation to essentially try and stay at the at-large voting system. As you, and has, has been mentioned this evening, the vote is previously adopted Measure X, which enhanced basically the provisions of the city's charter. However, there is a government code section thirty-four eight eight six, which would allow us to by ordinance essentially go to a district-type election without having to amend our charter at this point. Essentially, the CVRA basically provides that on a, on a mere showing of racially polarized voting, that we would create potential liability for the city. You have a resolution before you this evening that would suggest, and I think it's our recommendation that you proceed and adopt that resolution. What it does is it puts into place a very short timeframe within which to get to district elections. We have essentially ninety days to do so. There will be numerous public hearings, and we will be soliciting a lot of community input with respect to how that district, districting process works, how those boundaries are drawn. And as Mr. Rafferty indicated, obviously, there will be a lot of oversight with, with respect to, to that process. Again, it's a ninety-day process, and unless Mr. Rafferty is willing to provide a ninety-day extension, which we have requested, we are going to need to move quickly. The first couple of steps will be to hire consultants to start doing a demographic study of the community in order to help establish what those districts might look like. We have, in the staff report, also provided a proposed schedule of actions. And as noted, I have Tara Taguchi and Ms. McCarron from my office available for questions. The resolution is attached. I believe you're all familiar with it. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Deportinowski. Madam Clerk, will you kindly read the recommendation?
That the Honorable City Council adopt Resolution Twenty-one dash one hundred, declaring its intention to transition from at-large to district-based elections for members of the city council under Elections Code Section one zero zero one zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're now going to get into technical questions for clarification as it relates directly to this agenda item. We're going to begin with Member Becerra.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Metzler, if I may ask, Mr. Devernowski, a question, reference. Mr. Devernowski, my question to you would be, even if we did move or we do move to a district voting, you still need three votes up here to pass any item, correct?
That is correct. It would be a majority. It's a majority of a quorum. It's not thirty-three votes on any item. There could be items. For example, we only have three members, in which case you need a majority, which would be two votes. But typically, yes, it's going to require a majority of a quorum to, to pass actions.
There we go. Okay, so a majority. So even if, like it was brought up, we have a road or something in our district that needs to be redone, we still need to play nice basically to get stuff done, correct?
That is correct. There are numerous situations actually where three votes would be required. There's a, in connection with the adoption of any ordinance or any resolution or any items that consider the, the payment of monies. Those would require three votes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. No further questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Member Gomez.
Yes. What would happen if, for whatever reason, we had a split vote?
A split vote essentially ends up in a no vote. The item would not be passed.
Okay. If this passes, do we start immediately, or are we getting an extension?
Right now, the, the goal would be to start immediately until we can, are afforded an extension by, by Mr. Rafferty. The intent would be to immediately go out, retain some consultants, get the demographic study done as quickly as possible so we can start having and scheduling public hearings for the public input on what boundary districts might look like.
So is a split vote the same as a no vote means, what happens with CVRA?
It's not a no vote. It's a fail vote.
What are the difference between the no vote and then the fail vote if this were to occur in this council?
Basically, whatever, what, there's no real difference. Basically, the item would fail for lack of getting a majority vote.
And so that means no CVRA, or there's pushback? I'm just trying to understand futuristic proposals.
Right. If there was, if, if, if there was a split vote this evening, we would not be proceeding with going to the district election. At this point, would not prevent us from reconsidering it.
Okay, so, but that would still allow for other attorneys to come forth and be able to push this forth, right?
That is true, yes.
Okay, and who was the last demographer, the last time that we brought in? Do you remember?
I believe it was somebody called National Demographics. I'm not sure. Tara, do you remember the name of the demographer that was used?
I think it was National Demographics Corporation.
By chance, was it Doug Robertson? Do we know?
No, I don't believe it was. I don't remember the individual's name.
Okay, so looking at this, is there a potentiality that we would bring same demographers that we've had for the cities of the nearby Inland Empire? I don't know if this has been monopolized with demographers.
I would assume that we will go out for RFP and seek proposals from various demographers, and then based on the city staff's review of that, they would make a recommendation as to who retain.
And is there an option to go up to seven members? I saw something in the California Municipal Law Handbook that allowed for up to seven members if that were something that would, was an option.
That's not being considered at this time. That's a different issue that this council could take up at any time it wanted to.
Okay, so not considered means not at this time, but it's a viable option if it were to come by three votes. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, if, if you had a majority to vote for it, we could consider it yes and start looking into the options.
Okay, and what are the, the costs that the city's encumbering, whether it's the attorney's risk assessment, administration processes and procedures, and maybe other costs that I have not alluded, but they're presumptive in this, that we as a city would incur?
We have no idea at this point what the costs are if you decided not to proceed with the resolution of intention. There is no limit potentially on what the plaintiff's attorneys could recover. They would recover potentially all their costs if they were successful in, in their litigation. As to the city's costs, certainly, we're going to be retaining consultants. We've got to schedule public hearings. There will be notices, so it will be, I would assume, it will be an expansive process, but I have no idea what those costs are at this point.
Okay, but futuristically, we can bring over an adoption or like a parallel or just a juxtaposition of the IEs bringing their demographers and then our costs so that we can see that we didn't spend any more or any extra or any less. Is that something viable?
Well, I'm sure staff will do the best they can in order to assure that we are getting cost-effective representation from our consultants. Again, I don't know what that looks like, and certainly I suspect they will look at other demographers that have been used by the nearby communities.
Okay, and lastly, is there anything that you feel that I didn't ask that I should have asked or you can clarify for me?
I think hopefully, I think the staff report is pretty complete in terms of providing you the necessary information as well as the resolution that's before the council.
Oh, yeah, that reminds me. I did see three letters, but two of the letters, for whatever reason, seem to have a blockage with the received of, and it's not a complete letter. Do we know why we decided to shortchange or truncate some of these pages for community members to have viable for them to see?
That I'm not sure, but you are right. There were two subsequent letters from Mr. Rafferty, one dated September twentieth and one dated September twenty-seventh, and hopefully those would be available to anybody that wants copies of them. They certainly should reach out to the city clerk, and I'm sure they can get copies without any kind of missing, missing verbiage on them.
Thank you. No further questions. Thank you. Mayor Portem Irving.
Yes, I have one very basic question. The ninety-day timeframe, is that doable? Considering.
It, it, it is very, it's going to be difficult, but it is doable. There are going to be a lot of requests from you to, to probably go to some special meetings, scheduling public hearings, so it's going to be quite time-intensive. It is doable. It's going to be difficult.
And, and the reason I'm asking the question is because one of the subsequent, subsequent letters, I guess where the attorney inquired as to whether or not Attorney Rafferty would offer an extension. The conversation went and kind of went, you know, off on a tangent, speaking about filling the fifth seat. And I got from reading the letter that there was a possibility he might not grant it if we don't fill the fifth seat. But that's not what's on the table today. You're saying that this ninety-day timeframe is doable.
That is correct.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. So, Mr. Deportinowski, if we send this out for RFP, is there, those normally have to allow so many days for that process. Is there a way to, to handle this in a more urgent way?
Well, these are probably going to be professional services, so we may be able to avoid that under the municipal code and, and, and short-circuit that process, because again, those will be professional services. But we are going to start, if you adopt that resolution this evening. I think tomorrow, eight o'clock, we will be working as hard as we can to get people on board.
Thank you. Well, and then let me just say thank you for the very comprehensive analysis provided on the agenda item. I particularly appreciate the stance, of course, that the city takes that, you know, we don't agree that there is any diluted voting or that no one's being disenfranchised, and especially when the will of the people just a few short years ago made it very clear what they desired. That said, we're in a new day and we are where we are. So just to be very clear, in the resolution, if I recall reading it correctly, regardless of a council made up of members voted in by district, we still have a responsibility, correct, to carry out the vision and mission of our city. That was a lot of work to put that together, and that, of course, marries quite well with our strategic action plan. So, you know, as you know, I'm sure there, there are many concerns across the state about this type of voting system, creating fractious councils, and kind of get, you know, being more given to backdoor dealing. You do this for my district, I'll do that for yours. But in this resolution, do I recall reading very clearly that we are going to set to our standard way of doing business and that we are going to work toward the betterment of our entire city if this were to go forward?
Yes, we, we have provisions like that in the, in the resolution itself, and nothing that we're doing at this point should change that.
Thank you. All right, with that said, the chair has no further questions and invites.
I'm sorry, before we move forward, I have one other question that I.
You may, yes.
To fully develop. This is to Mr. City Attorney. Should we pass this resolution and we move to transition to, to district-based elections? And we're not able to meet the ninety-day timeframe. What, what, what will that look like?
That's an unknown at this point. Our intent is just to get the ordinance done by that date. We do have, obviously, the Thanksgiving holiday that's going to fall in between, so we're going to have to ask for your council members' indulgence in terms of making yourselves available for various meetings. You have a CVRA is a little unclear as to what happens if we don't get there by the, by the ninety-day. Mr. Rafferty would be willing to be cooperative and give us extensions if we're close.
Yes, I'm, I'm worried about the timing. So, okay, thank you.
So, and then, so I'm going to springboard on that as I, as I have additional time. So, Mr. Deportinowski, I, I didn't get the, the latest letter that we got from Attorney Rafferty. I, I just had a moment or two to scan it, and there's certainly a lot that we can delve into on, on that letter. I'm not going to do it here tonight, but one of the, there was one part that I picked up that there was some kind of a February twenty-second date that something happens, and if extensions were granted and it went beyond that time, that it could pose certain problems.
Yes, because of additional information, census information becoming available, it might sort of change the, the analysis and might put us back to square one in terms of. in terms of efforts that we have undertaken to get the districts drawn the way they're drawn.
Your time is up.
So, thank you. All right, so with that said, the, we're gonna move on from questions, and the chair invites a motion from the city council.
I'd like to make that motion as recommended by staff.
So you would like to move staff's recommendation, Member Gomez?
So staff recommendation is to write an intent and move forward from 90 days. That's my understanding. If that's the case, my understanding, is that correct? Yes, it is.
It's to adopt the resolution. Is that the recommendation?
So, like I said, my understanding is within 90 days, we're gonna start doing this, and that's my understanding. I would like to move that motion as recommended by staff.
Okay, the recommendation, on the report, Member Gomez, one moment so that I can make it clear for the entire council. The recommendation is that the Honorable City Council adopt Resolution Number 21-100, declaring its intention to transition from at-large to district-based elections for members of the city council under Election Code Section 110. Is that 100, I'm sorry, 10. Is that your intention?
Like I stated, it's my assumption and understanding that we're moving within 90 days, that we have three people, and if that's the understanding, if my interpretation of what I've read, I like to move staff recommendation.
Okay, the chair isn't gonna consider that.
That is staff's recommendation. I don't know how else to repeat it, but I have solidified what my understanding is. I don't know if you have a different interpretation, if you would like to say it, and then I can back out. I don't know if there's a different interpretation that you're gathering.
Thank you, Madam Mary. The chair offers a substitute motion to adopt staff recommendation as laid out on the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. We're gonna move on to discussion on the pending motion, beginning with the chair, and I have no discussion at this time on the pending motion.
Well, when there's a motion on the floor, I think you had a, you didn't get a second.
Member Gomez has not been recognized. If you would like to be recognized.
Yes, I would like to be recognized. There's a lack of clarity.
Sure, so the chair offered a substitute motion to move staff's recommendation as it's posted on the agenda. It was seconded by Mayor Protim Irving. We're now in discussion on the pending motion. The chair has none. Mayor Protim Irving?
I don't have any discussion. I just wanna say to my colleague, you were actually offering an amendment to the motion.
Oh, I don't believe I was offering an amendment, but I thank you for that clarification if that's what you believe.
There was no amendment to the motion. All right, and Member Gomez is precluded from speaking on this item as she spoke to speak as a member of the audience. Member Becerra, comments on the pending motion? Thank you. With that said, the discussion period is now closed. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Becerra.
I'd like to be recognized and asked for clarification.
The chair has invited a vote, and we're moving on, Madam Clerk.
Right, I was asking for a clarification.
Councilmember Gomez.
Did you decide not to?
Okay, one moment, so Member Gomez, in the past, it has been made very clear to the member that once the vote is invited, we're not going to get into any other questions. We're moving on to the vote. Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Okay, so then the clarification is that
Please take the vote.
You didn't clarify yet what was happening. I'm trying to understand what just happened before I vote. I didn't know I was offering a
Two votes, Madam Clerk.
I didn't know I was offering an amendment.
Member Gomez, do you wish to vote on the item?
Yes, I'm voting for us to go ahead and move to CVRA to do by districts.
So we are
So you took my vote next.
And, Madam Gomez, presuming that the vote is to approve staff recommendation, and the chair votes aye?
Motion passes with Councilmember Gomez not voting?
Yes, I said yes.
Gomez did vote. It was convoluted, but Councilmember did vote.
I did voted. It's on the record. I said yes.
Madam Clerk, she did.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So the council has just taken action in accordance with the recommendation laid out on the agenda. And as there is no further business before us, just one item for everyone. This chamber is to be vacated within 10 minutes so that we can take care of our housekeeping issues and so forth. And so that would be at 6:12 PM. No members of the public are permitted behind the dais. Thank you, everyone. This meeting